Thank you very much. My name is Jim Geronimo. I'm in Municipal Revenue Services. And we're a company out of Erie. And we structure the purchase and sale-
Jeff, could you bring your microphone closer to you?
Yes, sir. Is that better?
Yes, Jim.
I apologize. Municipal Revenue Services is a company out of Erie. And we structure the purchase and sale of taxing bodies, delinquent real estate taxes, not limited to school districts within some counties and cities and boroughs and townships as well. We were contacted to discuss how this sale is structured, what it would mean from a financial standpoint to the Carlton School District, and to discuss the nuances associated with it. Had a meeting with your superintendent, as well as some follow-up phone conversations. And as a result of that, as well as obtaining the relevant delinquent tax data from Ages and Price, we were able to put together a proposal that I believe was emailed out. And there was a short addendum to it or modification to it this morning. I believe you all have a copy of that. And you may or may not have had the opportunity to read it. It looks like this, except yours is in color. Very briefly, let me describe what it is that we don't do and what this isn't is. This is not a loan. The school district is not taking out a loan. You'd be selling an asset. The asset is your accounts receivable of your delinquent real estate taxes, which is a renewable asset. The asset repeats itself every year, and we would purchase that asset every year. This is a transaction that underwriting firms such as Moody's actually approves of. They look at this as a positive financial step by taxing districts to take full advantage of an asset that they currently aren't taking advantage of, and by doing that on an annual basis. Because this is not a loan, it doesn't impact your debt structure. It doesn't impact your borrowing ability. It doesn't impact your interest rates. It has a zero impact. And under the regulations from the DCED, it is defined as a true sale of an asset and not debt under the GUD, which is the Local Government Unit Debt Act. The other thing this is not, or that we don't do, is we do not collect the taxes. You have a firm that does that. They do a pretty darn good job of doing it. We have no interest in collecting taxes. We simply are buying the asset, funding it upfront on an annual basis. And as Ages and Price does the job that they do, they remit the revenue to us, and we use that to pay down frankly the loan that we take out to buy the liens. There is continued reporting associated with this. We get reporting directly from Ages and Price on a monthly and then on a quarterly basis. And we provide forecasting to the district to show you exactly what we anticipate the revenue to be, what it actually is, to show you that everything that we say is going to happen actually has happened, and then from a prospective standpoint, to show you what's going to happen in future years, so that there's some predictability with respect to budgeting in the future. Pardon me. When I say we structure the sale and purchase, what we do is we utilize what's called conduit purchaser. That's a nonprofit purchaser. A nonprofit purchaser in this event would be a redevelopment authority or a nonprofit that is already involved in our taxing and sales, most likely in western Pennsylvania. We would structure a loan on behalf of that purchaser, and we would purchase the liens based upon a formula that is predicated upon the collections history, as well as the annual turnover. And those numbers I'll get to in a second, although you probably are very adept. The transaction in its first year is designed to be able to capture the aging that you have, that is, the uncollected receivables on your books, so that we can bring that forward. And by bringing that forward, you experience a windfall, a lump sum windfall in the first year. If you have that document in front of you, that description of that would be on the second page. Right now, you're getting from Ages and Price approximately anywhere from six to $650,000 in annual revenue in your delinquent taxes. That's based upon a delinquent turnover in the $700,000 range, give or take. These numbers fluctuate to some degree every year, but not wildly. The first year, assuming that you would be getting that revenue directly from Ages and Price, we'd be in a position to double that revenue, so that you get a windfall approximately $600,000 that first year. And when I say that first year, I'm talking about a transaction in February or March of 2018. So you will have already received some revenue from Ages and Price from July until December. We would purchase the liens, including the new turnover of delinquent liens in January as of January 1. That transaction would take place in the first six to nine weeks of the calendar year, and you get a wire transfer for all of the revenue. The program is designed, therefore, to be evergreen. And what I say evergreen, what I'm talking about, is that we renew this every year because, as I said before, the asset itself is renewable. You're going to have a new set of turnovers in January of 2019 from the folks who didn't pay the taxes in 2018, and that pot refills, and we would buy it. And because of the unique structure of our financing, we would be able to provide not only what your budgeted amount is now, but revenue in excess of that, because we can capture the old liens, the revenue from the old liens, as well as the interest in principal or penalty, and bring that forward.
If I could interrupt briefly?
Yes, sir.
Is it a fair way to say that this approach takes future anticipated tax revenue and moves it forward in the process? And for you doing that for us, you take a small percentage of those future revenues as your fee?
Yes and no. Yes to the first part of your assumption, that we are essentially bringing current anticipated future revenue based upon the accounts receivable. Our fee is financed. So the purchaser, and we control the purchaser, but the purchaser pays the fee by financing that fee. So hypothetically speaking, if the transaction is a million dollar transaction, and we have to go to our bank and borrow a million dollars, we're going, and our fee is $50,000. We borrow a million and $50,000. When the revenue comes into our bank, it's used to pay down our note, which encompasses the interest on that note, as well as the fees that are part of the body of the note. The structure is, the detail in forecasting that we give to the bank presumes the interest, presumes the value of the fees buried within the note, so that when we show the bank an amortization over about a 48-month or 60-month period, they can see that based upon the forecast, collections from Ages and Price, and the remittances to the bank, how that note gets paid down, so that the following year, when we buy more, we draw against the equity in that note, it resets itself. And this is a program that just resets every year.
Is this something that should be done, that we would, if we were to do it, this would be done at the beginning of a fiscal year, so that... What's the right time cycle for your perspective?
Pardon me. The right timeframe is the beginning of the calendar year, because that's when, and it's conceptually somewhat difficult unless you're really familiar with it. As you know, the tax bills go out in July, and the tax bills are on a fiscal year. But they're due at penalty by December 31st. And if they're not paid by December 31st on January 1, they become delinquent. And it's the delinquent pool that we're buying. So in order to purchase and for you to be able to maximize the profit from the sale of delinquents, you want to do it as close to January 1 as possible.
I'm anticipating, and toward, I'd love to hear your feedback, but I'm anticipating we'll have questions in the process. We'll have some questions that we're not even sure that we can anticipate tonight. We're going to digest this a little bit, maybe ask some follow-up questions for the next meetings. But I'm looking for you for some guidance as to what, what a level of urgency should be.
In all candor, this is about the time of year the school boards are having these discussions about this. I'm very, very busy in November. I'm a school board meeting's probably twice a week all over the state right now, because the timeframe is, discuss it preliminarily, get a handle on it, get the data from the collector, run the numbers, make a presentation. You guys digest it, kick it around, get back to me with some questions. And because I'm just up in Erie up 79, I can come down here and meet face-to-face again with the full board, with finance committee, with just a handful of folks that falls within the regulations of the Sunshine Act. I can meet one-on-one. I can answer email list of questions very easily, that can then be distributed through the administration. So this is a time of year that it's imperative to do it if you're looking to close, like February or March. I would suggest that the latest you want to sign a resolution authorizing the sale would most likely be January. Not a lot of, as you know, not a lot of work gets done at the December meeting. It's just a reorganization.
So Chair of Finance, I mean, what would you recommend? Would you recommend the board digesting, we've had four questions on the 20th? Would you recommend, should we move it to Gary? What do you think, Board?
I would think that everyone can kind of digest it, but that move with good speed, because I do think it's an opportunity. And the firm has always been very responsive right away. So if we have questions, even if it's not a list of questions, I'm sure we gave them something in the morning, something afternoon, just to keep the dialogue going, so that it can be reached in place. But surely, I want everybody to be able to think about it and look after it.
Any more questions today? Are we ready for a structure of immediately?
So I guess just quickly, I'm not a numbers person at all, but what happens if you sell more than what you collect?
Oh, okay. I understand where you're going with it. Part of our job is to monitor the collections as they get, as against what we forecast those collections to be, and monitor the pay down of our note. If we see, and this is not uncommon, if we see it anomaly on a monthly, and we review these all on a monthly basis, if we see the collections report that comes in from Ages and Price, and we anticipated $75,000 in a particular month, and the collections are $15,000, I'm on the phone with Jim, or James Barrett at Ages and Price, saying, James, what happened last month?
Well, I'm far wrong person, but I got the concept.
I apologize.
Tony, Julie, or Chair, did you say James Barrett?
Yes.
Yeah, in Azars.
Yeah. Or Tony.
One of those two you talked, it's hard to hear up here.
I apologize.
No, it's not your fault. It's just difficult that I thought about it.
But that's accurate. I would call either James or Tony at the firm. And historically, when that's happened, the answer is usually, the person who was supposed to send out the checks was on vacation. The checks are sitting on the desk. Actually, and this isn't a problem, this is a good problem to have, the anomaly that we see more often than not is more revenue came in than we expected. And then we're also on the phone, because we want to know whether that's going to be something that's repeating itself, or if that was just a one-off. And often, it's a one-off, because there was a big delinquent tax bill that got paid, for whatever reason. And that's important to know too, because the more that comes in, the more we pay down our note, which provides greater equity in the note the following year, we can draw it down even further and provide more. Now, to take your question to the next level, what happens if we see a pattern of that? Well frankly, we correct it the next year, because if we see a pattern of nine months in a row, and I'm sure this isn't going to happen, but if we see a pattern of nine months in a row of us anticipating $70,000 in the collections or $30,000, obviously, we can't advance as much as we did the year before, because the collections don't match, and our bank wouldn't permit that kind of loan anyway.
So there's a point where you guys come to us and say, okay, we're short $30,000 in what we collected, we're going to check.
Oh, no, no, no. That doesn't work that way. Once you sell, it's your money, you keep your money. You have no obligation on this whatsoever. The only time that the district has an obligation is in the event of a default by the purchaser, that is, the purchaser doesn't pay the note. And at that point in time, there's what's called a mandatory buyback, which is where the district has to pay off the note in order to cure the default. That's never happened. And it's never happened for the reason that I just explained, because of the monitoring that we do. And if we ever see an anomaly and a negative, we catch it right away and make corrections. And we can, and you know, if the school district goes forward with this, Dr. Piper's going to be sick of me, because we communicate on more than a regular basis with our clients, providing them with copies of our bank statements, so they can see the ribbon coming in, they can see how the note's being paid down, gives them some predictability, give them our quarterly updates in terms of our forecast, and boring bank stuff like lien-to-loan ratios, things that you probably don't care about. The other thing that I failed to mention is that, I mentioned the DCED opinion. One of the other aspects of the DCED opinion is that this revenue can be restricted by the board. In the resolution, you can pinpoint something that you want to use it for. New curtains, new stage, something like that. It's, but the revenue in fact is not restricted, unlike a bond. In a bond, you have to use it for brick and mortar and some other things like that. So there's some flexibility and some freedom, but it's also within the purview of the board to narrowly focus that for utilization.
I have a question. To make it more worth your while, will you be approaching Carnegie Borough, Crafton Borough, and Russell Farms Borough to get their tax delinquents to, or are you just collecting?
They don't collect, they're not collecting.
I understand what you meant. Most likely not. And the reason for that is, it would not be economically feasible to do so. The value of the borough or township taxes is significantly less than a school district. And consequently, school districts have, any place in the state, school districts are going to be the largest portion of a tax bill. And while we do purchase delinquent liens from some boroughs, those are boroughs that are, have a very dense population, and consequently have a very dense residential population outside of Philadelphia. And consequently, they have a very high volume of delinquent liens. I haven't investigated the dollar value of those boroughs and townships. My thought is, if they're similar to others that I've looked at, they're probably pretty small, and it wouldn't be cost efficient for us to pursue that. But it's, having said that, if somebody owes a huge delinquent lien or bill to one of the boroughs, chances are, they owe a delinquent lien to the school district as well. So no matter who pays out, we get paid.
I have two questions. The program is designed to be evergreen, and we do annually, it says you're going to tax the earnings that were ever required, so if you decide not to sell, do you just linger in the quarter until we found that we want to get up again? Like what is that?
Right. Well, I don't envision myself lingering. But what traditionally happens, and we've had clients, for whatever reason, step away. To my knowledge, no one's ever stepped away disappointed, but they've just, for whatever reason, moved away. And if that happens, and I've explained this to Dr. Piper, I would suggest that you structure your way out of it. Because if you do walk away cold turkey, so to speak, there's going to be a negative budgetary impact. And I want to make sure that your budget can sustain that. So for example, instead of us advancing the amount that we would advance in year four, if that's the year you want out, I would suggest we ratchet that down a percentage, so that there's a smaller negative budgetary impact that you can sustain. The flip side of that is, all the revenue continues to come in, and that means, because some of that revenue we didn't pay to you, we're using it to pay down our note faster, that accelerates your amortization. And after probably two years, then our note will be paid off. And under the terms of the agreement, once our note's paid off, you can buy back all of your unredeemed liens that we still own for five cents on the dollar. But not five cents on the dollar for all of them. You get them all back, but the purchase price is based only on the last four years purchased, which will have been about two years ago, under this hypothetical. So consequently, you're talking about pennies on the dollar. And there should be additional revenue left in our account from the revenue that's come in to pay that. So that's, we don't want to see any negative budgetary impact. It's not good for anybody.
So in a second one, it's a fact that, would there be any impact potentially to the changes to the home city exemption yet from the past to go on tomorrow? That change, I don't even know how to find it, but anyway, if it went through, if it became real, could it be scheduled?
It would only impact it if the school board, using the new authority of the law, if it's enacted in the past, to exempt 100% property tax. And that point in time, I'd stand here and say, well, I can't buy anything next year. And then you got a bigger problem.
I guess that's something to forward to. Watch out for tomorrow on that.
That's an excellent question. In the last two or three months where I've been all over the state making these presentations, that's the first time anybody's actually, and I haven't brought it up to anybody on purpose, but that's the first time anybody's brought it up.
Which is why we're going to admit it.
Any other questions for Jim? I think we're interested, we're curious, any questions? Gary, we're interested in to you, I would hope for questions. And if we answer prior to the, we might have some more conversation.
Thank you very much. Thank you for the opportunity. Have a nice night. Take care.
So next on our agenda is an update on the Create Lab. And I'll offer this to the board and to Mike and Gary. Do we want a full update on the Create Lab tonight? Do we want a quick update on it tonight, and then board in-depth on the 20th? What is the board more? How about a 60-second or less update? On the point, we'll look for a 60-minute presentation on the 20th.
I can provide the board, in the essence of time, the outline that I've prepared for tonight.
I'm sorry.
That's okay. And we've very briefly, we've done site visits, we've talked to company partnerships. Our maintenance department has done a fantastic job in updating the space. What's next are the lighting and painting and creating of the stations. And this will result in student opportunities, use of the room. There are a number of different stages, proposed stations that we have. Some of them, we have the supplies for them already. Others, we're working on getting more stations in place. So, and we've moved forward with how it will operate as well. So we're pretty, it's a 60-second. And it's detailed in this outline.
Does any board member, if you have questions, you want to email Mike or Gary, then you can then use those questions for their 20th.
Thank you for your flexibility.
Sorry for cutting your presentation. So we're going to move on in our meeting. Prior to going to the minutes, I'd like to ask the board, in light of the audience's participation and their advocacy and approach, we can step in now and either, we have a couple of months, we can move later and maybe accept the resignation as presented. We can table the motion, which effectively says, we're not going to, we're not going to accept it now, we're going to allow it to progress to the next meeting of further conversations and further investigation. And I believe that motion's sort of hanging there, or we can vote against it outright. If there needs to be more conversation, we can encourage, really, making concessions and have a conversation about personnel issues, if we couldn't publicly. So all the terms of the board, if they'll hold, say, what is, what is our preference?
Jim, I just want to say something. It's not, it's not often that we get people to go out of their way to come to school boards. We've had parents, a detractor, a coaching, and half of the football team that came here and support Coach Yoder. I want you guys to go into school tomorrow and tell everybody that our Carlton football team tonight got a win. Okay?
I'm going to turn now. You got them, Chris? Procedure for, how would you want to proceed?
I'd say we table this. I would like to see a table.
I have a couple of questions, I think pertaining more to guest procedure, I don't know, is executive session, inspection this morning, or tabling against further inspection this morning? I don't know with the best way of going to do this, but I have some questions about, I guess, with the, and some of the details, so.
I'm altering some now, just as a way to help the meeting, if there was a give and a home with you.
But yeah, I know.
That's why I thought that it was likely to get positive without, the coaches, everything, players are pretty eager to parent you. If these things resolve, pull it out. I think we should move it up to, end up now.
I would suggest we went to executive session. Agreed. Just to get some questions, so. So that we can ask. Make a vote.
Do you think we can take the executive session? So maybe a 15-minute reset?
You know what I'm saying? All it is, we will go into executive session for matters of personnel, you know, all it takes, we'll be back.
So for the, for the audience, you can stay. We're going to try to not make hours. But the meeting is not over, we're just going to take a break. Go because it's personnel issues, discuss privately, and then come back and resume the meeting.
Okay, so we're going to take a short recess, move to the next. Is there any way that you guys can turn that up? It's very hard to hear what you're saying.
I think I need to be.
Interview. So we're reading the beginning of the meeting, kind of got into executive sessions. And again, to help get people back to their lives and maybe the homework that they still have, we're interested in the coaching question that we came to talk about tonight. After guidance from the administration, there's going to be additional review to be made. And so the motion that is currently under our Personnel, Section 3, Number 3, we are not going to, we're not going to read that, we're not going to motion that tonight, it would be further reviewed, and a final decision will be made at a future meeting. So there is not a motion on the table tonight to accept the resignation. And one clarification from the board, there were lots of people that correctly identified that wins and losses are not the only thing in sports. And we as a board, we as a district, believe that is the case. We believe that the coaches, as many of you advocated, the coaches should be building, young men and women should be teaching leadership, teamwork, hard work, all those great assets and all those great characteristics. And so we validate those, we validate those attributes that are in our coaching staff. And I think one of the two board members wanted to make an additional comment on that one.
Well, I would just like to say that I don't, I don't understand where-
Joe, can you put the mic across?
Sorry. I don't understand where the information, that there's some kind of conspiracy, you know, to actually force a resignation. All I know is, in my package, I got a letter of resignation. That's all I know. And to say that, you know, we've got these grandees on, forcing someone out of position, that just isn't the case. That's all I know.
Anyone else?
Yeah.
My thought to this, many of the parents out there, they, you know, they know I've been involved in Little Buggers, and I've been involved in the Parkland basketball. And one thing which I do know is, two things this school district provides, it is what brings people here, is acting- And one thing which I do know is, two things this school district provides, is, it is what brings people here, is academics and, uh, athletics. I know what it takes to, to raise, to monitor, to, to create a Division One athlete. I know what it is to inspire and to move and motivate young players. And you're right, it's not about winning the losses. It's about perception. It's about not feeling that a district, a team, a person, a coach is being a hostage in order to move forward there, 'cause they have a, uh, agenda. We're all just adults here, all right? Forced to do anything. We're not forced to resign. We're not forced to come up here. But one thing we do have in common is the future of our school district. And I do appreciate all the young players coming up here. I know the difficulty speaking with everyone. And this was the show, is building your self-respect. You got to do that, didn't you? You did a fantastic job. You guys spoke very well while on your behalf. And it's not about winning the losses. It's about building character. It's about moving forward as a school district. You know, like the, uh, gentleman said, play soccer. He had the last ten years he made one, ten games. But I know a lot of students that came out here who are athletes, a lot of students came out here who were scholars. And part of the school district that builds great people with fantastic character and has the best of the parents out here and the I. So, it was a difficult decision not to vote on, a difficult decision to support with this. But we did take every person in this audience, those who left, into consideration. Thank you for your time.
I guess, in terms of what's next, the administration is gonna address some of the questions and issues that we have. And hopefully for the next week, but we do not for the next week, we'll, we'll have this back on the agenda. It, it, no, depending on, on children's checks, right? So, um, just because we're not voting on it tonight, doesn't mean we're not going to address this. We're going to address the complicated issue that comes out and there's some questions that we have. So, we don't have a solid answer for you tonight, and I apologize for that. But please, as the board, we're comfortable to report everything the questions that we have. So, and thank you so much for, for coming and being a part of this process. And staying engaged because this issue is over. And just because, just because we're not voting on it tonight, it means that hope is off again. We're not voting on it. So, um, so, uh, let's start speaking.
November twentieth.
Twentieth, yeah.
Uh, what does that mean for the coach? Is he allowed to bring his players into the weight room, to gym, take him back on the field, so we have something to base on for next season?
Why don't you have him meet with, uh, Dr. Playfer and the athletic director to work out, what, details like that? But we're not accepting this resignation. That's not a motion.
Um, yes.
Mr. Allen, just so you know, that there, based on what I was saying, and nothing to do with any of your board members on there, it's hard to force the resignation. I came to the understanding that the board basically had no idea of what was going on. That's why I enlightened people today with emails, different board members, what have you, um, and needs, to enlighten all of you out there of what was going on. Okay? Because this was happening behind the scenes, right? The reason for the resignation letter was because it was told to him that if he doesn't resign, he will be fired. Okay? And as a coach, you do not want that on your, on your, on your-
Ben, Ben, Ben's, Ben's hearsay, right?
I understand that. That's what I'm trying to explain to you.
Thank you. We're gonna allow the superintendent and the athletic director to work through this, again, reading their comments. I, I appreciate it. We're coming forward and sharing your thoughts and, um, advocating.
And by not going, your only kind of life would be stolen, right? It's not offering here.
Well, our hope is to get answers, so, and quickly, so there's not open air, because absolutely, we don't want to now have the kids to take this hit. That's, that's not an acceptable option. But we, as people who are stewards of this district, we have all the information to our satisfaction in order to proceed in the best way forward that we believe. Because we all want what's best for the kids, for this district. And in order to do that, we all need to be comfortable as a unit, as a corporate body. We need to have some question there, that there are some outstanding issues that need to be addressed. Because there's some of the personnel issues that can be discussed publicly, and those can actually trip the spirits up. And we do not want to judge these kids' grounds by no means. And unfortunate that it's come to this weird place, but this is where we are, and we're going to try to resolve this quickly.
I feel like we've given everyone an opportunity to speak. We feel like we've given the process, uh, due consideration. It was ten fifteen, ten twenty. Most of us have been here since, since six. I'd like to continue with the meeting. I think everyone's had a chance to, to speak their mind, to share their thoughts, and, um- Yeah, there is, uh, one of the director's questions, there is an open forum section at the area of any last thoughts. We can share that, uh, we're gonna move on. I'm gonna enter taking motions approved in minutes of the October sixteenth, twenty seventeen Finance Committee Meeting as presented, and minutes of the October sixteen Voting Meeting as presented. So, I have a motion. Move by the secretary. Secretary, any discussion? If not the vote, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, nay. Long extension, Eric Michelle. Motion carries. Um, I'll report that we had an executive session prior to this meeting, where we talked about personnel and real estate issue. I'll now turn to Dr. Playfer for brief administrative report.
Thank you. The only thing that I'd like to mention is House Bill, uh, one seventy-eight, came along today. In fact, Governor Wolf has signed it. There's a couple of conditions that directly affect us through the body. One is the continued delay of police exams as a graduation requirement. Uh, I believe it follows year nineteen twenty. The problem with that is gonna be the exams will go away. Students just love to take them, uh, either be as a medical, uh, ESSA, but they won't be counted as a graduation requirement. So, if we're going to sign that bill, uh, involving a amount of furlough, superintendent contract, uh, and other things that may affect our operations, we'll discuss in a bit more detail, if things can be remembered out of food, amount of money paid for the rate of labor grant, to be the same as what we got for here. I'll add at this time, as it's getting late, I'd like to call Ms. Riley, uh, for word for visiting.
I'll say I'll report for, uh, next week.
Mr. Burleson, for its board.
All right, I'll make it very quick. Um, Crafton has been doing great, as usual. We've gone through Red Ribbon Week, it went really well. You saw your kiddos come into school with their themes, if it was Dress Up or, or Team Day. Um, the PTA did a nice job making sure they were giving our students some different types of promotions, if it was a lollipop or a ribbon. Report cards went home last week. Our report cards went home, I think, without, I haven't heard of any glitches, so that was a good thing. We did a lot of proactive things prior to make sure they were going home like that, but I think they went home pretty smoothly for, for the parents to see. PTA sponsored their first Halloween dance for, um, our Crafton families. It was a free event. And it was, it was well-attended, had a DJ and crafts and, um, food. And it was a nice time to just bring the families together for something that was free. And the kids could use our costumes again, 'cause parents are always looking to, they spent so much money on costumes, so why not use it again? Um, and then the last thing I just wanted to share, I'm working with the Carnegie Mellon University Learning Lab. We are looking to, um, recreate, they're helping to write a couple of grants for a Norilla. And if you know what a Norilla is, um, I like to think of it as, if you went to the Carnegie Science Center, it's like the earthquake machine. If you can picture that, so it's basically bringing, uh, like the physical and virtual world together to help with some of the STEM activities that our students are working on at Crafton. So, that's exciting. I'll keep you posted. But, um, that's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Jack, please, you're the district leader. Thank you, Dr. Playfer. Uh, under the section miscellaneous, there's one item, I'll entertain a motion to approve additions to the twenty seventeen, twenty eighteen conference. Until trip request has been denied, the motion, I shall move by a second. Move to second, any discussion? If not the vote, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, nay. Motion carries. Under section two finance, we have four items. I'll entertain a motion to approve, number one, the July twenty seventeen bill with the amount of six hundred and seventy thousand, four hundred and seventy-four dollars and eighteen cents. Number two, the August twenty seventeen bill with the amount of one million, five hundred and thirty-four thousand, one hundred and eighty-four dollars and fifty-one cents. Number three, transportation contract agreement between the district and the yellow cat company Pittsburgh has presented. Number four, the number twenty seventeen real estate tax refund for the Borough of Carnegie, as per today. I have a motion for those four items. So, move by the second. Move to second, any discussion?
Number three, whatever we use, the yellow cat company, that student card, or not student card, like individual, or-
Yes, there have been implications where we have done that.
Do you have a rough estimate of the dollar amount then?
I have to ask, uh, Shelby, she, she provided that.
Do you think it was negative or negative? I have a ten minute. Do you have any of the last numbers? Any other questions for those four items? If not the vote, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, nay. Motion carries. Section three personnel, we have two items, number one and number two. I'll entertain a motion to approve, number one, the additions to the twenty seventeen, twenty eighteen activities supplemental list as presented. And number two, the working position of high school guidance officer secretary, September Chataca, consistent with the terms of the estimated length of parking, we do agree. I have a motion for those two items. Move by the second.
Second.
Move to second, any discussion?
Jim has a question. On the, um, supplemental list for the Cooper instructor and honor their sponsor. We were, that's me, Crowe, right? Is she just took over, right?
Yes.
So, is that gonna, that's not the correct amount then? Okay. So, she's not getting that four, now she's getting one, is that right?
Right. That's correct.
All right.
Any other questions?
Thank you.
If not the vote, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, nay. Motion carries. Section four policy, there are two items. I'll entertain a motion to approve, number one, the second and final reading of policy three zero one to three one three, for the TSBA full policy review. And number two, the first reading of the provisions to the rental fee schedule, policy seven zero seven, as per today. I have a motion for those two items. Move by the second. Move to second, any discussion? If not the vote, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, nay. Motion carries. Um, old business, any director, any old business, say like? Uh, Bill noted that we have a motion from a previous meeting that was left on the table, and we'd like to move it through the table and then move. First, we have to vote the data. So, uh, the, the third policy item on your agenda was on the table from a previous meeting. So, I'll entertain a motion to remove it from the table so that we can act on it. I have a motion to remove from the table the second and final reading of policy two one zero, copy of medications, for the TSBA policy review. Move from the table by a second to move through the table.
Second.
Move to second, any discussion?
Question for clarification. Two ten point one, was that up or tabled? Dr. Playfer, that's the second one that we discussed about emergency possession use of a present.
I, I thought that was tabled as four, but we rolled off two ten.
I thought so too, but we didn't. I just wanted to be clear about what we were.
So, Bill, there's two ten point one, is that a part of two ten?
I believe it is.
So, that would bring all of that.
Bring the whole thing back. You know, well, that brings it back, and then you'll vote on the entire two ten included, two ten point one.
Is that a great, right?
Yes.
So, this is a vote to remove from the table policy two ten. Do I, we had a first, we had a second. Um, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, nay. Motion carries to remove it from the table. Now, I'll entertain a motion to vote for the second and final reading of policy two ten, copy of medications, for a TSBA policy review. Do I have some motion? Move by the second. Move to second, any discussion? If not the vote, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, nay. Motion carries. Um, now, old business, any director, any old business, say like?
Just to put in the fourth year, um, we did some revisions to the rent fee schedule, policy seven seven. I think, um, we're going to remove the history of seven seven, I think, at some point. We're visiting seven oh seven, and, um, just sort of how that reflects our philosophy of community engagement. And, um, community value in the school. There are some issues with seven oh seven that I think, um, are sort of prohibited to the, um, community building aspect of our philosophy. For seven seven to be, be addressed.
Part of our facility needs policies. So, maybe we can, once we agree, we can take that on, uh, maybe we can take that up in January. Our, we can prosecute the word that can be adopted. We need to have a committee review over time, and then bring a recommendation to be overall worded. Any other old business from any director? If not new business, any director, any new business, say like, to address or discuss. Seeing number one, open forum, any remaining open forum lines from anyone in the audience? It'll be brief, right?
Brief and loud, I think.
Okay, go for it.
All right. Can I pick my podium, please?
Yeah.
All right.
Brief and loud.
Brief and loud and to the point. Um, what I was speaking about, Nyra, was about the, when, when I say about the kids being penalized. Most schools now that aren't necessarily in playoffs, okay, are now in the weight room, all right? If we don't have a leader to have us in the weight room, yes, Mr. Palco's there every day, um, but, you know, but the kids then have to have the motivation to go on their own. All right? As we all know, um, that's not always the case. And so, without having a leader till the twentieth, now we're, we're, we're setting these kids backwards again, okay? It's just, I, I'm just, just, I'm done with that, that, I just wanted to explain to her how I, how I felt the kids were being penalized, okay?
No, that's just to show the fact, we accepted the resignation, and I would have also known that.
Right, I understand that. No, 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 I understand. Excuse me. I was hoping that we would get this taken care of today. The other thing I wanted to ask, um, and you had brought this up, Nyra. With the fact gathering that the board is planning on doing now, from now until the twentieth, to answer the questions, where are we going to get, where is the plan for these facts to be gathered? Is there, is there a committee, a public committee that can be created to answer some of the questions that you have? Where is this fact finding, um, where are these facts gonna come from?
Superintendent and the athletic director are on the vocal board for that. They're gonna update the board and give us.
Okay.
But it's, it's a recommendation from superintendent and the athletic director that-
Okay. Well, I'm gonna take a step back then, okay, with, with what I, what I just asked. If Coach Yoder wouldn't have handed in the resignation, okay? The board would have not known nothing about it. The only reason why the board knew any or would think about it is because it was on this agenda, okay? So, isn't there a disconnect there? There's something that's not right, okay? And I don't know if you're gonna get the facts that you need without going to the people that it affects the most.
It is not unusual in the process for the-
No, please, my group.
It is, it is not unusual in the process for the superintendent, the general, the department of law, to come up with a recommendation and present that recommendation to, um, the board. And it's not unusual for people who just help them resign, right? So, um, how this played out-
So, um, how this played out, I don't know. And so, what we're going to do is back track a little bit.
Okay.
And figure out what, what it's going.
Okay.
With that, there are questions, and then there are questions that come from the question. So, you know, I'm going to, you're a bit too, too, too stuff, right? And so, the, the people that are here, the administrations are three people. I look at the assumption that there's some indication of something. We've gotten to another point. Another point just happened.
Right.
So, we're going to back track a little bit and figure out where, where the disconnect happened. I don't think there was anything maliciously, or that intense, or something in a back room, a higher pleasure, kind of get that feeling at all. But something has happened, so we've gotten to this other point.
Right.
And so, that is.
I, I, I'm going to interrupt here, before you say. It's going to be an investigation discussing how it's done and devised. That's been left up to the, to the administration. I'd really recommend that there not be any further discussion. This is a personnel that's in effect, I don't know where he is, this gentleman's future as a, a coach. It, it's not proper to keep discussing back and forth, Mr. Prenter and the rest of the board. I think that the, the administration knows its direction. It's time to move on.
Okay.
Thank you.
Any other open forum members? If not, a board member can open the forum. If not, I'll undertake a motion to adjourn. I still move. Move, in favor of second? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, nay. You are adjourned.